Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 20th City Council meeting. I'd like to start off by thanking our Phil Am group for coming in and singing Christmas carols for about 20 minutes before we got started here. Our mayor is somewhere between here and Olympia stuck in traffic. He went down there for a meeting today and was trying to make it back, but obviously he has not. If he shows up, I will move out of this seat and he'll sit in here and take over. We're going to start the evening tonight with an invocation by Father Roger V. Horn from the Grace by the Sea Anglican Church. Follow -- we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance, which I'll lead. Thank you.
Please join me in prayer. Almighty God, we thank you for your goodness to us and to all people. We're especially thankful for the city of Oak Harbor and the blessing of living and working here. As we enter this Christmas season, we remember the one who came to bring peace on earth and goodwill towards all people, and we ask that peace and goodwill both in Oak Harbor and for this entire nation. This evening, we pray for your wisdom and your grace and your truth as we enter into the business of government of this city. We pray especially for our mayor, Bob, for our mayor pro tem, Danny, and for each of our council members, Rick, Jim, Beth, Tara, Erica, and Joel, and for all the departments of government of this city. We pray that all of the discussions and the decisions given here this evening would be conducted with honor and with integrity and with respect. Remind us continually of the trust placed in our hands by our fellow citizens. Give us the grace this night that we might be worthy of that trust. And we ask all these things in the name of him whose birth we remember this Christmas season and whose name Emmanuel means "God with us." May he be truly with us this night. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Thank you, Father. I'd like to start -- I'd like to start off with advising the council that I would entertain a motion excusing the mayor and Mayor Pro Tem from this meeting.
I'm going to excuse Mayor Bob Severance and for councilman for Danny Pagau.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. How does the council feel about the agenda for this evening? Mr. Suredis.
Thank you. I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion by Mr. Suredis, second by Tara. How does the council vote?
Aye.
We have some presentations this evening. The first one, I'm going to just go right over to our police chief and give him the floor to make his presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So I get to make two presentations tonight, and the first one, Sergeant Nero, could you come up? So the two presentations are on the differing ends of the spectrums, so to speak. Sergeant Nero is one of our five sergeants with our department, and we very much appreciate his service, and he is hitting his 25-year mark with the city of Oak Harbor as a police officer and as a sergeant. And so we're here to present him with a 25-year fleece, and there's a pin on it. So on behalf of the city of Oak Harbor and the mayor, who couldn't be with us tonight because of traffic, and the council members, we'd like to present you with a 25-year pin and fleece. So I had to make sure I fit that in because really the one that endures all the hardships are the wives and the family members, so appreciate it. So the next presentation, I'm going to be swearing in two of our brand-new officers and giving them the oath of office and introducing them to you formally. So if you two could step forward, Officer Taylor and Officer Adriano. So first, actually tilt this way a little bit, guys. First, I'm going to let them introduce their family if they're here. I think one of them's chasing a kid up and down the stairs. But if you guys want to introduce your family, Officer Taylor?
Right here is my wife, Holly Stewart, and my son, Maurice, that's on the porch. And he's just about to come up when we go right in.
My oldest, probably right around here somewhere.
So thank you two for both being here. Appreciate it. And you know, before a blink of an eye, it'll be like 25 years, like the other officer will be doing it. So you know, police officers have a heavy responsibility, and when you start your career out of the academy, you're anxious, you're excited, you're apprehensive, and you're assigned as part of a training program with the police department, and these two are going through the training program. And an exciting future and lots of things to look forward to. So we're going to read the oath of office, which talks about some of their responsibilities and what they signed up for, so to speak. So I'm going to read this, and if you guys could repeat after me as I do it, if you could raise your right hand. Okay, I state your name.
I, Jeremy Andrew.
I, Maurice Stewart.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And you can both say it at the same time. That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington.
And that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the ordinances of the city of Oak Harbor.
And the ordinances of the city of Oak Harbor.
And that I will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
And that I will, to the best of my judgment, skill and ability.
Truly and faithfully.
Truly and faithfully.
Diligently and impartially.
Diligently and impartially.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Oak Harbor, Washington.
For the city of Oak Harbor, Washington.
As such duties are prescribed by law and ordinance.
As such duties are prescribed by laws and ordinance.
And I further swear.
And I further swear.
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
That I shall diligently and faithfully.
Carry out the lawful directives of the duly constituted authorities.
Carry out the lawful directives of the duly.
Constituted authorities, excellent. For the city of Oak Harbor.
For the city of Oak Harbor.
And that I shall abide by.
And that I shall abide by.
Conduct rules of the law enforcement code of ethics.
Conduct rules and the law.
Of the law enforcement code of ethics.
Law enforcement code of ethics.
So help me God.
So help me God.
So of course, you never get nervous doing that kind of thing, and it's so hard to follow somebody anyways. I think you guys did a great job on it. So our two newest Oak Harbor police officers, and formally introduce them to you, and thank you for letting us be here and do this in front of you.
And thank you for your service. Let's take a five-minute break so we can shake hands. Next on our agenda is a presentation by the director of the impaired driving impact panel of Island County, Itepic, and we welcome Director Mike Diamanti. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor and a privilege to address the council. It's really appropriate after some police officers were just sworn in, the very individuals who are protecting us on the roads from impaired drivers and their behavior. My name's Mike Diamanti. I'm taking over for Joanne Hellman, who many of you are familiar with, who took care of and was an excellent advocate for the impaired driving impact panel of Island County for 16 years. The city of Oak Harbor has supported the impaired driving impact panel and our mission for many years. For more than 16 years, Itepic has presented impact panels in Oak Harbor, Freeland, and N E S Widbe. In addition to these panels, we present information in the middle schools because our mission is to deter driving under the influence and underage drinking through education and awareness. Our panels present factual information to driver's education students, their parents, military personnel, offenders, and the general public. Our speakers tell the audience how impaired driving has affected them, their families, and their community. Once you hear local people speak of their pain and loss as a direct result of impaired driving, you will understand what can happen as a result of poor decisions. After presenting more than 500 civilian panels and 60 military panels, Itepic knows that our volunteer speakers deeply affect all those present. Why should we have victim impact panels? Because people suffer every year due to impaired drivers. Traditional criminal sentencing efforts, fines, jail time, et cetera, are not enough to curb DUI rates. Impact panels are a method to break down the anger and denial of offenders by allowing them to see and hear how others are impacted by their choices. If you influence attitude, then you can influence behavior regarding DUI and underage drinking. Injuries can be avoided, lives can be saved, suffering can be diminished. How can you help prevent impaired driving? Have a conversation with your family and friends about the consequences of driving impaired. This will remind you to be responsible for yourself and others. For additional information about Itepic, please visit our website and the link to our Facebook site. And on behalf of all of our volunteers, speakers, supporters, and partners in prevention, our donors, I wish you all a safe, joyous, and satisfying holiday season. Thank you very much for the time to address you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, the citizen comment period. We have three people have signed up to do the comment period. We ask that you, when you go up to the microphone, tell us your name, and then you can talk for three minutes. I'll raise my hand if you get to three minutes. First, who signed up is Blaine Sherwood.
My name's Blaine Sherwood, and it's real good, real honored to be up here and address you. I'm speaking about helping with the homeless, about getting a building. I suggested about one across the street from the police station, and hopefully that one would actually be a good spot. Thank you. Now have a good day.
Thank you. Mr. Hovey, wait a minute. You've signed up to talk about something that's on the agenda. I'm going to wait until we get to that point to let you get up and speak. Is that okay?
Consent agenda?
Yeah. It's next on the agenda. Pardon me?
Normally, you would speak to consent agenda now.
Before we start?
During this time.
Okay, okay. I've been told that normally you can speak now.
My name is Hal Hovey. I'd like to address item 4I on the consent agenda, the proposed right-of-way for the Boyer property that's owned by the city. I'd like to say upfront that I have no objection to the right-of-way being established. I do have some questions and clarifications that I would hope that we could address tonight. It looks like the proposed action tonight is to provide an easement, not actually establish a road, but with the intent to have a future access road on that parcel that provides access to the two commercial properties to the south of the city-owned property, which will become landlocked once the state closes down Highway 20 to those properties. I guess my question, or one of the things I'm wondering about, is we just spent a ton of money on traffic consultants to develop a transportation plan, and this didn't come up during all that work and all those workshops that were involved in the transportation plan. You know, you go through the 40-plus items that were identified as actual, you know, estimated cost for them, and the 60-plus items that were priority items, and it's not anywhere on there. We also just finished the Transportation Improvement Plan, the five-year plan. It's not on there, so I'm kind of wondering why the timing, as to why this came up so recently after we just did all that work. The transportation plan did have a proposed road going near that property, a bit east of where this proposed easement is, something that didn't line up with Whitney Road to the north, but it was just as a proposed future road. So I guess my concern really that I want to talk about tonight is if an access road is going to be built on this property eventually, when do we anticipate the road being built? Who's going to pay for it, or how's it going to get paid for? And if the city's paying for it, how can we be sure that the funds that are going to be necessary for this road aren't coming out of other really important projects like the Northeast 7th and the other things that are on the Transportation Improvement Plan for the next five years? So again, I'd like to repeat, I have no objection to this right-of-way. My only objection is if the city has to pay for it and as a result diverting funds away from other, you know, equally or more important transportation projects, projects that will affect hundreds or thousands of our residents as opposed to providing access for two commercial properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Merriman?
I think what we would do, there's a lot of questions here that go beyond what we have for this item. Mr. Stoll can talk a little bit about the project on there, but some of these, we would need to get more information on that to talk about things that are outside of the easement discussion.
Okay. We'll wait then. The next speaker is Fanny Dean. Ms. Dean?
Hi. My name is Fanny Dean. I lived in Oak Harbor for 41 years now, and this is something very, I think it very forgetting and the gentleman that was up here early, I'm here to talk about homeless. And the reason that I'm bringing this back up, and every time I contact somebody, they saying they got paperwork in progress, but nothing ever happened. But I want to address the city to let y'all know it's really no carbure. It's down below our church on Gold Road. It's cold outside, and when I go to the church, there are people just want to get in for a few minutes to get warm. And I know everybody got their agendas, but I'm bringing it back to the city before 2016 up. I don't know who in charge, but somebody need to let me help them out. I'm willing to look for a place, even if I know living in a place, this city got rules and regulation, but them guys need to come in at night. And with all this fun and taxing, all of this other stuff on the agendas, somebody need to be held accountable. If the police department find one little spot for them to just, if they don't do but set up all night, they need to get out of the cold. I know the danger. I know the danger of when they come to the church and say, "Could we have water?", but they don't have no place to stay warm. I know the difference, and when they go to the welfare office to get food stamps, but they don't have a address, what good is the, what good is the food stamp doing? They ain't got no place to cook it. So I don't know who's in charge, but I volunteer. Not, not for we to have meeting after meeting after meeting. I got people that has given me information to help out. If we have a building that open up at 11 o'clock at night till 7 o'clock the next morning, how much is they going to do? How, how much could they do to, to damage a building? I believe with the tax money of city of Oak Harbor, somebody got some money can let me rent a building to get these people out of the cold. You guys don't know about it, because you know, y'all go to y'all own houses, like I go to my own houses. But there need to be somebody. My phone number, 360-914-0781. Somebody need to call me. I go up there in the middle of the night, and I watch these people, giving them a meal from church to church, they still ain't got no place to sleep. And when you can find not just men, but women too. Now, the biggest Christmas gift I can ask for you guys, somebody, please, let me get on the committee. Hey, you know by now I'm a smart woman. I know how to hook it up. Somebody just need to stand and sign the paper. Oak Harbor can give up about a good $600 or $700 a month. We ain't going to get broke. And y'all probably saying, "Woo, she talking bad." No, I'm talking real good now, because when we leave here tonight, we got a place to go home. But what about them? What about later in the night when I go up there and they wondering on Gold Road? Thank you, my three minutes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Next, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. What is the council's desires? Yes, sir?
I would like to pull 4I so that we have an opportunity to address some of the preliminary items.
Okay.
To answer Mr. Hovey's questions.
Okay. One pull is 4I. Anything else? Mr. Suredis?
Thank you, then. I'll move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of 4I.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Suredis, a second by Ms. Heisen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Negative? Mr. Stoll?
Well, council members.
Could you address 4I, please?
Yes, I sure can. Just to give some bearing as to where this is located at, if you're going on Highway 20 going north out of town, on the right-hand side, there's the former Westgate Mobile Home Sales area there, and there's a driveway access that's, you could say, as grandfathered in because it was created before the managed highway access was imposed. And once the use is changed, or whether that's the amount of traffic or the use of the property, the grandfather part goes away, and we have to reevaluate that driveway for appropriate use. And managed access for a Class II highway like that is favors alternative accesses to the highway over driveways directly to the highway. And when you consider that particular location with a merge lane from Regatta and also where you have the passing lane that comes to an end, the city took a forward step to provide an alternative access to those properties so that would maintain access without having the danger of that existing driveway that's there. So what the deed, the deed and dedication for public right-of-way does is it allows us to have a public road, and it doesn't necessarily generate a formal right-of-way like we're used to seeing for a road, but it provides a public access to those properties. And the reason why we did it that way is because there's a lot of restrictions on those properties because of the noise zone and, and all the easements that are related to the purchase of those properties that date back before me. So that's the background to it. That access road is in the transportation comp plan to go from Facama to Case Road. Ultimately, we would like it to come all the way back up to Regatta, so it would provide an access for all those properties. If, once the easement's granted, the intent is to seek economic development funds to fund it, and that is reflected in the budget that was approved. This project's in the budget that we recently approved as being able to construct once those funds are acquired, so it doesn't come out of the general fund, doesn't come out of Streets Fund, doesn't come out of Northeast 7th Street.
So economic development, .09 funds or where would?
Yes.
Ms. Heisen?
Just quickly, did you say that this access road was in the comp plan or the tip? What plan did you say that it was existing?
The transportation, well, there's the transportation element, which is an abbreviated form of the Transportation Comprehensive Plan, but it's, it's in there.
Thank you.
Anyone else with questions? I have one for you. Is for a number of years, we've been receiving letters, the city's been receiving letters from a property owner just a little bit south of where Westgate was, and the question is always, "When am I going to be able to get a road? Is this going to satisfy that?"
I think the end result will. I think the right-of-way by itself is only part of the solution, actually. The roadway is the ultimate solution.
Or we're working on it.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Stoll, if this easement is approved, and then there is an applicant submitting a development preliminary plan or a plan period, wouldn't it be incumbent upon them to actually provide the street improvement and the utilities to the properties wherever they may lie of their application relative to this easement?
You know, I'm hesitant to respond to that without seeing the applicant, application that's being submitted. We have had a pre-app for development in that, that area, and the response was generally We have had a pre-app for development in that, that area, and the response was generally that we would prefer access off of Facuma versus access to the highway. Because once the access to Facuma is granted, then the driveway to the highway would have to be abandoned. So it's in the best interest to make that connection, the safer connection.
I understand that, that it's quite possible that the applicant doing the development would put in the improvements as we often or most of the time do for a development.
Yeah, then, then it, it could be a question of how that's paid for.
Okay, let it go at that. I'd move that we accept item I under four of the consent agenda.
Second.
A motion by, we have a motion and a second to approve four I. What is, what's, what, how are you going to vote on this?
Aye.
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 In favor, aye.
I changed it, I'm trying to keep you guys off guard. Well, that takes care of the consent agenda. Next on the agenda is the mayor, council, and staff comments. As the acting sitting in this chair tonight, I just want to thank the Phil Am Association that came and did their Christmas carols. They do it every year. They did a good job tonight. I, I, I was trying to sing along with them, but I don't sing very well, so I was singing quiet. But anyway, thank you to the Phil Am organization for their Christmas carols. Next, council members, anyone have anything they want to talk about? Ms. Muntz?
I do. I want to say thank you to the community for all that has been given to Help House. This is their week that they do the turkey toss, and it's being very successful, and everyone is being fed, and we'll have a complete Thanksgiving dinner. I also would like to ask prayers for two different members of our community. One is for the flyers at VAQ 132. There was a accident out at the base recently, and if you just keep them in their prayers. And the other one is for the manager of Hagan, Sherry. She died suddenly going off the road on the way on Sunday morning. And, you know, Hagan's just part of our family. They help out Help House, they help out individuals, and so when you're in there, you might just say, I'm sorry for your loss, but that's a family too within our family. And that's all I have, wishing everybody a Merry Christmas in the city.
Thank you, Ms. Muntz. Anyone else? And we'll move on to, Mr. Mayorman, you have the floor.
I just have a couple of items. This is our final meeting of the year. And on that note, what I wanted to do tonight is really just give some thanks. We've had a really busy year, you know, when you look at the treatment plant, we have labor negotiations, we have projects. If you look at our consent agenda tonight, each of these projects is over and above the typical daily work that everybody does, and it just shows how busy and how much work everyone's putting out. So I wanted to thank staff for their work and their effort that they've put in this year. Also, we have a lot of people either who volunteer, they're on committees, they come and make public comment at our council meetings, and to you as council members as well. These aren't real high-paid positions, you know, this is, comes from the heart from people, and I'm thankful for that and for everyone doing that. I had a mentor of mine one time said, the public process isn't pretty, but it's always purposeful. And I always see that, you know, there's times we come and it's not always a clean, smooth way to get through things, but we do get there and we come up with a better community, a better project for it. And so I just wanted to thank everybody for that. And the other item I have for tonight is we have Brett to give us our clean water facility update.
I promise that shift just a little bit. Well, good evening. I, I do want to say for our project team, happy holidays to everybody in the city, city council and city residents, from, as from Hoffman Construction, Corolla Engineers, KBA, ERCI, and of course, city staff. We've had a very busy year, and we've accomplished a lot, and next year's going to be twice as busy. Design activities, you think design would be dying off, but actually, we have a lot of things still going on. We did a internal kickoff meeting for the Wind Gemma Park design, we're getting that moving. We are scheduling an open house for the public on January twelfth at Skagit Community College. I think it's from five thirty to seven thirty. We'll be sending out notices on that, so we're trying to have Zoom for design, get people involved with the process. One part that we are moving on now that we've actually committed to a while back, but we're just now really getting busy, is our SCADA software development. That's a major activity that's going to be taking place in the next eight months. Construction-wise, right now, we're busily placing concrete, seven and eight. We're still doing very well on our self-perform, ahead of schedule, below labor, labor estimates. This month is a little tougher because we had a cold week there and two short weeks, so we're gonna stay on schedule, but we're not getting ahead of schedule. But first month, I got promises, we're gonna hit it again. We are continuing demolition. We will be finished with that hopefully by Christmas. We're getting tired of the tuck-talk, too, but we are getting the, most of the concrete out of there, and we're backfilling it. We've opened bids for GMP number eleven, and we are preparing an amendment for that to be presented on January twentieth. In our consent agenda, it was a minor item, but we are sending notification to the Navy for transfer of the lagoon, which is a two-year notification, and that's a major milestone. And I've had several people say we never thought we'd get there. So that is something to look forward to. I'm happy to report the city beach is now reopened. Paving jobs a little up on the rugged side, but we'll be repaving that in about eighteen months. Funding, nothing really new there. We are moving ahead with the loan amendment. We are starting to process payments again, which is good, because our costs are starting to pick up. This is our expenses through the end of November, and we're up about thirty-two million. That's since October and November, we spent about two and a half million, and that pace is gonna be picking up for the next twelve months. For you, the next, like I said earlier, the next big decision is consider award a GMP number eleven, which we hope to have for you on the twentieth. Schedule-wise, we're right on, on track. And of course, public outreach, you can reach us at nine one four seven thousand, or call direct, direct numbers on the phone, email us at treatmentplant@oakharbor.org. Visit the website, which we actually get quite a bit of hit on, oakharborcleanwater.org. We still have our Monday drop-in sessions every other Monday, though this Monday, we're not, we're canceling because it is Christmas. But of course, with drop-ins, we're pretty flexible, too. Any questions? Have a happy holiday.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Mayorman, is that all?
That's it.
Okay. We're gonna go into the public hearings session of our meeting tonight. Each of these items that we're going to be discussing, the, the audience can ask questions and do a standard three-minute conversation about the items if they choose. First item on the list is Resolution sixteen twenty-seven and Ordinance seventeen sixty-one, the Marin Woods Preliminary Plat PRD.
Mr. Campbell, if I could take-
Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
... presentation. It's my understanding that before I even start the colloquy with you, that Council Member Wassinger has something she'd like to say.
Thank you. Um, yes, I'm gonna have to recuse myself from this item due to my husband and I's real estate business, potentially having a future business related to this project, so.
Thank you.
So Council Rule nineteen requires that I ask you some questions to determine whether or not the appearance of fairness doctrine would require any of you to recuse yourself from this particular item. So I'm going to ask you some questions, and if you could all just nod affirmatively, that would be great. Does any member of this council have any knowledge of or have conducted business with either the proponents or the opponents of this particular project?
No.
Seeing none? Does any member of this council either have a pecuniary or non-pecuniary interest in the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Seeing none? Does any member of this council know whether or not their employer has a financial interest in the property or area which will be impacted by the decision of this proceeding? Seeing none?
No.
Does any member of this council live or own property within three hundred feet of the area which will be impacted by the decision in this proceeding?
No.
Through, I'd get a house close, I don't think it's within three hundred feet, though. Football field, probably not, but I could pull it up on Google Maps, but I don't think so. Close.
So, so you don't believe you have a property within three hundred feet of it? Does any member of this council have any special knowledge about the substance of the merits of this proceeding which would or could cause the council member to prejudge the outcome of this proceeding?
No.
Seeing none? Is there any member of this council who believes that he or she cannot sit and hear this matter fairly and impartially, both as to the respective positions of the proponents and the opponents in this proceeding?
No.
Seeing none? Has any council member had any ex parte contacts concerning this matter? None have been raised? Is there any member of this audience who, because of the appearance of fairness doctrine, wishes to disqualify any member of the council from hearing this matter? If so, please state the council member and the reasons why you believe that the council member should be disqualified. Seeing none, feel free to proceed.
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, members of the council, Ray Lindenberg, Associate Planner, has been the project manager on this application for us, and so he'll lead the council through the presentation. I'll also note for you that Mr. Rick Duran, the applicant, is in the audience this evening. Should it become necessary to ask him questions. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council. I'm gonna make a brief presentation here, and if there are any questions or anything, feel free to jump in and ask those. What we're doing here tonight, this is for the Marin Woods subdivision. This is a PRD, which is a planned residential development and a preliminary plat. So the Planning Commission has already taken a look at this and provided a recommendation to you. And then we'll discuss the process by which we got there, and then we'll reach a point where the city council may make a motion on the project. The topics that we're gonna talk about briefly, the project description, as I mentioned, the various applications that are included in the, the project, and then, again, finally, the recommendation there. The project description, it is a forty-six lot planned residential development on ten point six acres. The applicant is seeking a preliminary plat, PRD, and subdivision waivers to subdivide this site and create the associated improvements. There are residential streets that will connect to the existing developments to the east, which are, excuse me, Putnam and, gosh, I've forgotten the street name. We'll move forward in just a minute here. What is it?
Robertson.
Robertson, thank you. And then also a connection to the south onto Southwest Swan Town Road or Avenue, excuse me. This is the subject location, just north of Swan Town, just across from the intersection where Fairway Lane intersects there. These are the applications that staff has reviewed, and we provided the analysis to the Planning Commission. We have a preliminary plat, preliminary PRD, subdivision waivers, landscape plan, a land clearing plan, transportation concurrency, and the State Environmental Policy Act, CIPA checklist. You'll see the last two there are in italics. That's pretty much telling you that those are items that the, the staff has approved and gone through. That's not any kind of decision that the, the city council needs to make. For the preliminary plat, state law and the Oak Harbor Municipal Code set forth the process by which this takes place, the approval takes place. Planning Commission evaluates that preliminary plat and the PRD, and then makes a recommendation to the city council. City council will do a closed record review on that, and that's why we're here tonight. Now, this is the original layout of the plan, how it was previous to some revisions that we had done. The applicant had proposed to maintain an existing house on Swan Town Avenue and not provide a connection to Swan Town Avenue with a road. Staff felt that it was extremely important that we have that connection based on a number of criteria that are in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. And so the applicant went through, made some revisions, and included that connection on the Swan Town Avenue to fully connect the subdivision with the rest of the street grid. So this is the current proposal as it is. You see that there are three fewer lots in the previous proposal. They added in three new ones in the new proposal to be a total of thirty, forty-six, excuse me, forty-six lots, and then the open space areas included in that ten point six acres. So when we review this, we determine if the appropriate provisions have been made for a number of items there, you can see, including such things like public health, safety, and general welfare, open spaces, transportation, parks and recreation, things like that. We feel that, staff feels that those provisions have been made. The Planning Commission concurred with that. We determined if the public interest is served by the planning of the subdivision. Staff feels that that is the case, and Planning Commission agreed with that in their recommendation. So we move on to the planned residential development. This project utilizes the PRD provisions in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. Essentially, what that allows for is slightly smaller lots in exchange for open space and increased architectural design to protect and enhance natural and community features. So they have chosen to do that, to allow for slightly smaller lots than your typical seventy-two hundred square foot lots. Again, this is the same plan, just kind of showing that PRD concept. There's some open space areas, as you can see, towards the middle there. I don't think I have a laser over here, but there is an open space tract to the center of the property there. And then there's also open space tracts on the south end, which is on the left of your map. That's a trail that continues down to Swan Town Avenue. It allows for a trail system to continue through the entire subdivision and be connected to the existing neighborhood. Also, there is a twenty-foot landscape buffer around the exterior of the property there, you can see in the gray. That allows for some native vegetation to be included in the property. Generally, what they'll end up doing there, rather than trying to maintain all of the existing trees, is probably cut down some of the larger trees that would be subject to possible wind damage and things like that, and then replant with native vegetation. These are the homes that are proposed for the site, five plans there, elevations. Those will be what you will see on the site. It's approved as part of the PRD. The materials and things like that are also included as part of that information packet or the packet that they submitted to us. So the PRD review criteria, the PRD approval requires that the development shall conform in all major respects with the submitted plan sets. So what you see is what you get. What they've submitted to us is what will be on-site when it is constructed. So the Planning Commission reviewed that and concurred that the applicant did, did meet the standards that are set forth in the PRD portion of our Oak Harbor Municipal Code. So we move on to the subdivision waivers. There are a number of these. First two I'll discuss were administrative waivers. Those are approved by staff, and they are to allow for a narrower street cross-section in a location towards Swan Town Avenue on that main road, Upper Marin Drive. And then also another portion in front of that open space tract, the neighborhood park. That'll allow the applicant to have a narrower road cross-section where parking is not required. The parking standards are still met in this subdivision at a ratio of one parking space per two homes. They'll still have enough space to park people on the street in parallel parking, even with these narrower cross-sections in small areas. Another one, another subdivision waiver was to vary from the curved geometry requirements. Engineering staff concurred with the, the applicant on this and determined that that would be an appropriate measure to take. They also, as a note, did concur that the two administrative waivers for the narrowing, street narrowing were appropriate as well. And then a third is to vary from the maximum street grade requirements at one location on Upper Marin Drive. There is a portion there that's a little bit steeper than the ten percent maximum. Again, engineering staff agreed that this was an okay, okay to, to approve based on the slopes there. There's really not any other way to kind of get around that steep slope in that location, so we felt that that was approvable. Moving on to the landscape plan, as part of the PRD, certain landscape elements are required. I already mentioned some of those. As far as the native vegetation requirement, there's minimum percentages required there. Minimum percentages for common open space areas that they have met with those open space tracts that we saw, the, the neighborhood park and some other open space areas. space tracts that we saw, the neighborhood park and some other open space areas. The plan meets all the requirements, and so we feel that that has been satisfied by the applicant. There's the landscape plan, showing the park areas there and some of that native vegetation, as well as street trees and an entry area there. There'll be a 25-foot landscaping buffer along Swan Town Avenue as well. There is a land clearing plan. As you know, that property is heavily forested, so they'll need to go through the state DNR to get a logging permit. Transportation concurrency will be reviewed by the engineering department. And then the SEPA checklist has been completed. No appeals were filed on that, so we'll move forward with that one. So, getting to the end, the review process summary, the staff has reviewed the application, determined that it meets the standards that are set forth in the Oak Harbor Municipal Code. Planning Commission conducted a hearing and provided a recommendation of approval to the City Council, and so we are here right now for a closed-record review. Tonight, our recommendation is to conduct that closed-record quasi-judicial review. Number two, to move to adopt the Planning Commission findings of fact. Number three, to move to approve a resolution approving the preliminary plat and authorizing the filing of construction plans and permits. And then, number four, a move to adopt Ordinance Number 1761, approving the preliminary plat and the PRD.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll move into public comment now. If anyone has any comments that they want to make to this presentation, remind you to go to the microphone, say your name. You have three minutes. Looks like we have no comments, so what's the council's feelings on this one? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. In the years that I would present an application to the city and similar applications for this, I was always given the opportunity to comment on the experience with the city and also comment on the staff recommendation. Do we have the applicant in the off, in the, in the council chambers?
Yes, we do.
And if so, if they are, would they be willing to make comments about the staff recommendation and their experience?
We're delighted, looking into the future, that the council has approved this. I'm sorry, my name is Rick Duran. I married into the Marin family. The trust is, consists of the six siblings who inherited the property on the death of George Frederick Marin, who lived here for several decades, raised his family here, retired from the Navy into the U.S. Postal Service as a postal carrier, retired and lived to the age of, get this right, 93, in Oak Harbor. And both he and his wife are buried here in Oak Harbor Cemetery. So, there is Marin history in the town, and we are very much appreciative of the, of the cooperation of the city on this, on behalf of developing this. We started in the county. You might remember, this was an annexation from county urban growth area into city, and then went through a series of partners before finding our current builder partner, Waldron Construction, which has been a very beneficial and relationship, et cetera. We're happy with the results of where we are.
Thank you very much. That it?
That's it.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? What's the council's desires? Wait a minute, before you, before you, we have two items here. Do we have to vote on both?
We have four items.
Yeah. What's the council's desire on Resolution 1627?
Just be careful if I may.
Go ahead. Obviously, I'm a little confused.
It'd be best for the council to start with number two on the screen, which I think is also in your packet to, if you so desire, to adopt first the Planning Commission's findings of fact, and then move into the resolution and the ordinance.
Okay. What's your desires?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the Planning Commission's findings of facts, conclusions of law, and record of decision, and the conditions of approval for the Marin Woods Preliminary Plat, Preliminary PRD subdivision waivers and permits as listed above.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Omburg and a second by Ms. Muns. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed, say nay. You have a, we have a unanimous on that one. Now, then the next one, 1761? Okay. Mr. Servetus.
I move to approve Resolution 1627, approving the preliminary plat of Marin Woods and authorizing filing of construction plans and permits subject to conditions imposed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Servetus and a, and a second by Ms. Muns. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of negative, we pass those. Now, that's the only two on this one.
No, there's one more.
Other, we have, I move that we adopt Ordinance 1761, approving the preliminary plat of Marin Woods, PRD, and authorize the filing thereof subject to conditions imposed.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Omburg and a second by Ms. Muns. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Negatives? We have a, we have passed those two. Sorry for my confusion. Next item we have is Ordinance 1787.
All right, council members, thank you for having me here tonight. I got about a 45-minute presentation, so I hope you don't mind if I-
Point of order, should we notify a missing council member?
I think somebody go across the street and get the cops.
Oh, yeah, that's probably a good thing, huh?
In the air of May, I thank the council once again, departed for an airplane for Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Good luck.
Have a good flight.
Build quickly, efficiently, and quickly.
We'll be back.
Good night, Roger.
Then I'll just move quickly. Thank you.
Bye, Father.
What our agenda says is Ordinance 1787, repealing Chapter 11.08 and creating a new Chapter 11.08 entitled Right-of-Way Excavation Permits.
So, council members, this is a, actually, really, I was joking earlier, this is a really brief presentation. We have kind of a gap in our code right now that we have a permit to deal with excavations in the right-of-way, so if somebody's putting in a new utility or doing a side sewer or anything like that, that's not necessarily city-related, there's a right-of-way excavation permit. But say somebody wants to use the right-of-way to, work from the right-of-way to paint their house or the front of their building, we don't really have that. So, this is really the first step, is separating out the excavation permit. And then I have a draft form of the right-of-way use permit already on Nikki's desk, and we're working our way through that, so that'll be coming to you at a later meeting. But it's, it's something that was brought to our, well, it's something that we've been working with in engineering for a while, and something that was brought to our attention by WCIA to, that really drew our attention to it. And since we're in the code revision mode and I have the time to get to it, I brought it forward for you to consider. So, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to take them. That's it. There's a, the recommended action is to adopt Ordinance 1787.
Go for it. Do we have any comments from the audience? Looks like no. What's the council's desire, Mr. Servetus?
Thank you. I move to adopt Ordinance 1787.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Servetus, a second by Ms. Heisen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We passed it. Next thing on the item is the approval of the Professional Services Agreement, Grand Osborne, for storm drain comprehensive plan update.
Council members, now, can you believe I didn't have a PowerPoint presentation for any of this tonight? I just, it feels so strange to me, so I don't know what to do. So, I'm working for notes, so bear with me. But the last time we updated our stormwater comp plan was 2006, so it's clearly overdue for an update. We need to do this so that it frames up all, you know, the future projects for the city. We use it as the framework for our capital improvement projects, the projects that are identified in the stormwater comp plan are, are what we use for those planning purposes. Grand Osborne, we had three potential consultants look to do this work. Based on the written statement of qualifications, we chose to interview two of them, and it was really close. They were very, the final two were very competitive, but Grand Osborne was the one we chose to go with to prepare the report. So, in general, it's like a lot of the other comprehensive plans, you look at where you are right now. So, we'll be doing some mapping of our existing drainage basins, and then we model it, so we model the way our exist, our stormwater system works right now. And we've asked them to pay special attention to a couple notorious areas in town. You know, Bixma and 20 area, basically everything from Erie around a sixth on, on 20. That whole area needs, we want them to take a closer look at and actually recommend some options. We also need to consider the new implementation of our LID NPDS permit that we have to adhere to, the operations and maintenance of the stormwater utility. Ultimately, all this will lead to the generation of the CIP list, the capital improvement project list. And then at, towards the end, there'll be a financial review, which is in every one of the comp plans, and we're going to be reviewing the connection charges or system development fees, however you want to phrase it. With the transition to LID, where a lot more of the improvements are being on-site, we're going to have to be a little bit creative in how we fund the stormwater utility to do the inspections and required maintenance on these facilities. So, we're going to ask them to help us look into that and what that means to rates. And the schedule on this, it's, it's quite a lengthy public process that we go through. It's going to, we hope to have it adopted and have gone through all the hoops by this time next year. So, we're going to, we got quite a, quite a road ahead of us. But that's the, that's the long and short of it for the Professional Services Agreement with Grand Osborne. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the audience? Looks like no. What is the desires of the council? Mr. Omburg?
I have some questions here for Mr. Stow. Under the Exhibit B, engineering services scope and estimated cost, I can't quite follow the logic for what they have for fully burdened billing rate range for principal, and this is why I don't follow their range theory. You have a principal, and that principal's range changes from $112 to $177 per hour, and then they must average it out at 140. Why, if there's a principal, why does it range? Why does the range differentiate between the principal? And then you can look at the project manager hours. You have a project manager, yet you have a rate between 99 and $177. It doesn't quite make sense to me. So, what's the explanation for that when you talk to Gray Osborne?
Well, what they're, what they're trying to take into account is the actual labor costs for each employee that might be working on the project. So, if somebody's rate is $90, that's what we'll be charged. If it's 110, that's what we'll get charged. So, as opposed to charging us the highest or the average, they're going to charge us the actual for that particular-
Well, I, I understand what, the way you presented that, but when you have a principal, there's multiple principals who are charging different rates?
There could be, yes.
And the same way with the project manager, you're going to have multiple project managers on this?
Preferably not, but there's always that potential, and I think that's what they left it open for.
Because that's quite a big range between 99 and 177 per hour for a project manager on an analysis project.
Best I can offer at this point is to know that we'll be watching it very closely and working with them to make sure the rate's appropriate.
You didn't ask him that question, though, did you?
To be, my staff negotiated this work along with some help from Development Services, so unfortunately, Arnie's on vacation today and can't be here to help answer that.
Because I understand, I understand the civil engineer hours. I can see that they'd have multiple engineers, multiple people in the office. It, it just doesn't make sense to me that they would have that big of a range between the project managers and also the principals. And maybe at some other time, Joe, you, you could ask them about that, because it just seems unusual. Why would they just charge, say, we're charging $140 an hour?
I'll be glad to look into that further.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? And what's the council's desires on this one? Mr. Servetus.
Thank you. Just getting back there. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the Professional Services Agreement with Gray and Osborne for services related to developing an update to the Oak Harbor Stormwater Comprehensive Plan in the amount of $152,620.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Servetus, a second by Ms. Heisen. Any further questions before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Negatives? We pass that one, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have one, one final item on the agenda, 20 minutes?
20 minutes.
We're going to adjourn for a while for an executive session regarding pending litigation. We'll be behind closed doors for about 20 minutes. This is the last item on the agenda. Okay, the council's back in session. We had a 30-minute executive session. No action was taken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Mr. Servetus moves to adjourn.
Second.
Wassinger seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.